Good afternoon, esteemed board members, Dr. Cashwell, staff and all in our February 22nd, 2024 Henrico County School Board Work Session. Thank everyone that's being attentive today for your service, your expertise. We are going to proceed with enthusiasm, determination and a commitment to excellence in education. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you. All in favor?
I second it.
Oh, second. Thank you, Mrs. Cincella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific school board employees, including the discussion of employee case numbers 23-24-E2 and 23-24-E3, and the admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Who would like it? Mr. Irving, you got it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Good afternoon. We're back. The next item on the agenda is certification of closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, members of the board. I'm recommending that the school board approve the readmission of student case number 22-23-S2 and S2. And as always, the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
I move that the school board approve the readmission of student case number 22-23-S2, name of student protected under the Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Next, I'm recommending that the school board uphold the superintendent's designees' recommendation in employee case number 23-24-E3.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion for action?
I move that the school board overturn the superintendent's designees' recommendation in employee case 23-24-E3.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
For the next item, I'm asking the school board to take action on the recommendation received from the hearing officer pertaining to school board employee grievance case 23-24-E2.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion for action?
I move that the school board adopt a resolution in part and reject in part the report and recommendation of the hearing officer in employee case 23-24-E2.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda.
In what way, Madam?
To return to closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now that the agenda has been amended, I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific school board employees, including the discussion of employee case number 23-24-E2.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. Good afternoon. We will now certify closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the Open Meeting Act requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to reconsider item 4.03.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, now that we have amended the agenda, I would like to make a motion to reconsider item 4.03.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, pertaining to item 4.03, I move that the school board adopt the following resolution on employee grievance case 23-24-E2, whereas the School Board of Henrico County, Virginia, the school board referred employee grievance case number 23-24-E2 to a hearing officer pursuant to Henrico County School Board Regulation P4-10-001-R. And whereas the hearing was held on January 12th, 2024, and whereas the school board has thoroughly considered the hearing officer's report and recommendation dated February 9th, 2024, the transcripts of the hearing, written closing argument and the exhibits submitted by the superintendent and grievant. Now therefore be it resolved that on February 22nd, 2024, the school board adopts and incorporates herein the hearing officer's report and recommendation and the grievance dismissal is effective immediately. Be it further resolved that the clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the grievant, counsel for the superintendent and the chief human resources officer, who is directed to place a copy of this resolution and the hearing officer's report and recommendation in the grievance personal file. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. The next item is another opportunity to have a brief overview of the superintendent's recommended annual financial plan. As the board and public are aware, we've had a number of opportunities to share information with the board as well as hold public hearings and will be seeking your approval at this point in the process at our monthly meeting, but wanted to provide an overview at the work session. Mr. Wack?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members and Dr. Cashwell. The superintendent's fiscal year 2025 recommended budget was presented to the school board at the January 25th meeting and our 175-page detailed budget document was posted that evening. Following a public hearing that was held on February 8th, we are now asking the school board to approve the fiscal year 2025 recommended budget. As the board is set to approve the budget, we would like to take this opportunity to make an exciting announcement. Throughout the budget process, board members have championed salary increases for all HCPS employees and you have specifically stressed the need for immediate action to address bus driver pay and recruitment. Knowing the ongoing adverse impact to instruction caused by the persistent driver shortage, staff revisited the budget proposal and we've worked with the county manager to ensure a compensation adjustment for drivers will be included in the fiscal year 2025 budget. And understanding the critical urgency related to this challenge today, the superintendent is also making an adjustment for the current fiscal year with a driver pay adjustment that will go into effect March 1st. Next month, the starting rate of pay for drivers will jump to $22.98 an hour. That is about a $4 increase per hour or a 20.63% raise from the current starting pay rate of $19.05. This adjustment means all bus drivers will receiving a pay increase between 12.44% and 26, 20.63% depending on their current hourly rate. The advocacy from you as a school board and Dr. Cashwell has been and will continue to be essential as we work to leverage the highest across the board raise for employees possible as the fiscal year 2025 budget is finalized. So, thank you. We appreciate the school board's support of this recommended budget and continue to push for change in addressing division challenges within the budget to allow us to best serve our students. We are also grateful for the continued support of our general government funding partners as the county manager and board of supervisors continue to show steadfast commitment to ensuring HCPS is the best place to live, work, play and go to school. Employees should stay tuned for more on staff raises, which will be later in the budget process. In summary, these are the figures that were presented in late January and at the public hearing, but want to point out that the general fund is increasing by about $27 million in the fiscal year 2025 recommended budget based on the target and our overall operating budget is increasing by about 4.2%. Again, in our revenue summary, we can see that the target increase of about $27 million makes up the difference between the current year's adopted budget and the recommended budget. And finally, on the expenditure side, we can see that the vast share of our budget goes to instruction at over 75% in fiscal year 2025. Again, that's a brief overview and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wack. Colleagues, are there any questions or feedback at this time? Mrs. Cincella.
I'm just so thrilled that we could come to an understanding and fix transportation across Henrico. I know families in my district specifically have advocated really since September about the vacancies and how it was a real barrier for their children to instruction, especially at the middle school and high school level. So, I'm just glad that the team, that we all could work together with the manager and our counterparts to not only improve transportation for the fiscal year 2025, but effective March 1st. I'm just so grateful and appreciative for everyone working together and finding a way because that's what we do in Henrico. And then just, the budget is amazing. I can't wait to lead the way in the region when we announce our raises for our employees. Chair Atkins.
Thank you, Mrs. Cincella. Mr. Wack, to you and your team, thank you so much and thank you for this presentation. Dr. Cashwell.
The next item, sorry, mic wasn't on. For the next item, we have an overview of our HCPS career ladder. We felt it was timely while we've provided the board some updates along the way of our exciting progress on this front. As you know, our proposed budget includes significant funding for expansion of the ladder, so we thought it would be appropriate to update the board on the impact to date of the career ladder and how those expansion plans are important part of our work going forward. And again, to appreciate the board's support of continued funding in this area.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Atkins, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Leslie Hughes and I'm the Chief Learning Officer for Henrico County Public Schools. I'm joined today by Dr. Tracy Weston, Director of Professional Learning and Leadership, and together we'll provide the board with an update on the HCPS career ladder. It is important to note that the career ladder aligns directly with the Division's strategic plan, Destination 2025, specifically around the recruitment and retention of high-quality employees. For the board's awareness, a career ladder is a framework enabling employees to develop and advance within an organization. As you would imagine, employees who can advance professionally and increase their earnings in an organization where they are valued are more likely to remain in that organization. A career ladder also represents a personalized approach to professional learning and career pathways, providing employees with continuous means to enhance their skills and knowledge. More importantly, educators don't have to leave the classroom to advance on their career path. Before we share career ladder highlights, let's take a moment to reflect on the journey that's brought us to where we are today. On March 26th, 2020, Dr. Weston and I were poised to present the implementation plan for the newly designed career ladder to the school board. However, as we are all too aware, the global context shifted dramatically just 10 days prior to the scheduled meeting. While the pandemic temporarily slowed momentum, we fast forward to July 2022. After numerous focus groups and extensive collaboration with teams across the division, the career ladder, which was created by educators for educators, was officially launched, marking a significant investment in the Henrico staff. The career ladder stands as the most innovative and ambitious initiative for professional learning and educator advancement in the division and the region's history. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Weston.
As mentioned earlier, the career ladder journey, inspired by the superintendent's vision to create a compensated growth opportunity for staff, began before the pandemic. The vision received strong support from both our school board and the county board of supervisors and was brought to fruition through the collective efforts of the learning, finance and human resources teams. Initiated in 2018, the career ladder's design was informed by the voices of more than 40 staff focus groups aimed to increase retention and promote continuous professional growth. These groups were diverse, encompassing new and veteran teachers, highly accomplished and retired educators, individuals who had left the teaching profession, school mental health professionals and administrators. Representing all five magisterial districts, focus groups also included educators from all grade levels and subject areas. The resounding input from these focus groups included the need for compensated career advancement founded in professional learning, allowing educators to continue to work directly with students, and the need for meaningful and powerful professional learning in addition to pre-existing degrees and certifications such as a master's degree or board certification. Focus group input guided the development of the program's initial model. Progress from the first focus groups to actual implementation and anticipated expansion is highlighted on the slide. Through our research of programs nationwide, it became clear that Henrico's career ladder distinguished itself by its unique approach. Unlike most systems, which were primarily merit or performance-based and often not sustainable, Henrico's model emphasizes teacher growth through job embedded and compensated professional learning. Not surprisingly, Henrico's career ladder is attracting considerable attention nationwide. School divisions and professional organizations, both within Virginia and across the country, are requesting information to learn more. Marking the most recent significant milestones, the first micro credential course catalog was published in July 2022. And in January 2023, the first specialization cohort started with two learning tracks. We look forward to expanding upon these milestones during the presentation. There are three programs unique to Henrico that distinguish our career ladder from the handful of others across the country. It is important to note that Henrico is the only school division in Virginia that has a career ladder for educators. The three programs include specializations, micro credentials and the teacher licensure cohort. Throughout this update, you will hear and see the name HCPSU. HCPSU is the one-stop source for professional learning in Henrico. All information related to the teaching and learning framework, the career ladder and professional learning opportunities for staff can be found online at HCPSU. This afternoon, we begin by highlighting the specializations program. Specializations are year-long, 32-week cohort-based programs that offer practical and applied professional learning. Learning is centered around Henrico's teaching and learning framework, particularly focusing on the instructional model. Sessions are developed and led by Henrico staff and are provided to participants at no cost. Often referred to as an in-division master's program, the content is grounded in research and specifically caters to Henrico's unique student population, contrasting with traditional graduate-style learning, which cannot tailor its approach to a single school division or locality. All work connects directly to each participant's individual context as an educator with assignments and demonstrations of knowledge that ensure concepts are understood and are directly implemented into each participant's work. Learning through a cohort approach fosters a professional network, encouraging ongoing collaboration well beyond the end of the learning experience. Upon successful completion of a specialization, participants earn a 4.8% pay increase. In January 2023, the first two specializations, teaching and learning and diverse learners, launched with 48 participants and four specialists with the Division of Learning facilitating the courses. All applicants who applied for a specialization were accepted. The goal of specialization courses is the transfer of learning directly into classrooms. As shown on the slide, cohort participants complete an original portfolio of work throughout the year to show mastery of their learning. These portfolios include samples of student work, video recordings of practical implementation and reflections on professional practice. Feedback is an integral part of the learning process and is provided by fellow cohort members and adjunct faculty. The specialization process truly mirrors the rigor, knowledge and assessment of a higher education graduate course. The primary differences are that specializations are tailored to HCPS-specific language and practices, and again, they're offered at no cost to our participants. As stated earlier, one goal of the career ladder is to positively impact recruitment and retention. In 2023, the overall attrition rate was 12%. In contrast, specialization participants showed a teacher attrition rate of 4.1% with only two participants resigning to accept promotions with the Virginia Department of Education. Perhaps one of the most powerful data points gathered from year one participants came from quarterly surveys. 100% of participants indicated that they were overall very satisfied or satisfied with their experience in the specialization. At a rate of 99%, participants strongly agreed or agreed with the statement, participating in the specialization cohort positively impacted my professional practice. Open-ended responses from participants were overwhelmingly positive, including accolades for the adult learning approach, knowledgeable and engaging facilitators and for the cohort-style learning experience. One participant shared, "Being a part of this specialization allowed me to collaborate with other educators from across the county. It was the most unique professional learning I have ever done and I learned so much about myself and my teaching each week." The ultimate testament to the program's success is the growing interest from eligible employees. In January 2023, we launched the first two specialization cohorts with a capacity of 25 participants in each, and all spots were filled. By January 2024, the number of applications more than doubled, reaching 125. Thanks to the unwavering support of the school board, we expanded the number of seats to accommodate all applicants, ensuring everyone seeking growth opportunities was included. Without the school board's support and funding, this expansion would not have been possible. Also in January 2024, we further expanded the program by introducing a third specialization, trauma-informed educator, adding to our existing teaching and learning and diverse learner specializations. Currently, we offer two classes each in teaching and learning and diverse learners, along with one class in trauma-informed educator. The growth in both participant numbers and course offerings underscores our collective commitment to Henrico staff and professional development. Thank you for making this possible. We have that video that we're actually going to send to the school board at a later date that supports the work that we're talking about. As mentioned throughout the presentation, the foundation of HCPS career ladder is growth through professional learning. Instead of requiring a lengthy application process for participation in a specialization, eligibility only requires applicants to have five years' teaching experience and two successfully completed micro credentials. There are no additional requirements. Next, we will move to the micro credential program. Micro credentials are competency-based courses or experiences, providing 20 to 30 hours of targeted learning on a specific topic or learning series. The micro credential program provides an on-demand and personalized approach to professional development, featuring over 50 unique learning opportunities. Educators can choose courses that deepen their knowledge and enhance instructional practices. The program is structured to offer a broad range of courses accommodating shorter learning periods. This structure enables staff to engage in three or more micro credentials each academic year at no cost to participants. Micro credentials not only act as a pathway to access the more advanced specialization program, but also provide significant standalone value for targeted professional learning. They also serve to recognize staff for completing professional learning courses and demonstrating expertise in a wide range of instruction-related topics. Again, the completion of two micro credentials, along with five years' experience, are the only two requirements for applying for a specialization cohort. Micro credentials are offered three times a year, fall, spring and summer, with each course catalog providing 10 to 15 course options. A blended in-person and asynchronous learning experience provides flexible, a flexible schedule with valuable in-person opportunities for collaboration and feedback. The average class size for a micro credential is 20 to 30 participants and to date, all participants who have applied for a micro credential have been accepted. In just 18 months, the micro credential program has demonstrated substantial impact. Since July 2022, a total of 690 educators have completed 784 micro credentials, accumulating over 19,600 hours of professional learning. However, the influence of this program extends well beyond the 690 direct participants. Every colleague, team member, and most importantly, every student who interacts with a cohort participant benefits from the participants' learning experiences. Throughout this presentation, we have focused on learning opportunities available to eligible staff through professional learning. Additionally, we would like to highlight opportunities for leading learning, anchored in our belief that we learn best from one another. We depend, thank you, upon our experts in the field, our teachers and leaders to develop curricula for both micro credentials and specializations. Moreover, staff who have successfully completed micro credentials and specializations qualify to apply for HCPSU adjunct faculty positions, potentially teaching one of these courses in the future. In fact, three year-one participants are now serving as adjunct faculty for year-two specializations. The 2324 school year brought the first expansion of the career ladder program, introducing the Virginia Department of Education-approved teacher licensure cohort for provisionally licensed teachers at the secondary level. And coming soon, a program expansion to include bus drivers, instructional assistants, office professionals and school leaders. While we are very early in the planning stages, we are excited about creating additional pathways for the future. For the remainder of this presentation, we will highlight the teacher licensure cohort. While many elements of the career ladder focus on advancing and recognizing established career educators, other components support teachers just entering the profession. The teacher licensure cohort, TLC, offers a proactive and innovative pathway for secondary provisionally licensed teachers to obtain licensure in Virginia at no cost to be a participant. This structured and accelerated route combines in-person professional learning from district leaders with online coursework from ITEACH, a VDOE-approved non-college program. Career ladder funding covers the $3,000 ITEACH program cost for each participant. Recognized by the VDOE for its exemplary dual approach, Henrico's TLC program stands out in the state, receiving acknowledgement from both ITEACH and VDOE for its retention success in the first year. TLC has demonstrated a strong impact, as evidenced by teacher feedback from both program participants and school administrators. Teachers report increased confidence in their instructional strategies, while administrators have observed noticeable improvements in classroom engagement and student learning outcomes. The program has also positively affected teacher retention rates. Historically, the turnover rate for provisionally licensed teachers was concerning, often due to the challenges they faced in securing full licensure while managing a teaching load. However, in the program's first year, only 2% of participants resigned and the remaining 96% of teachers are progressing through the program with an expected completion date of May 31st, 2024. Through this one-year accelerated program and upon successful completion, participants will meet the professional studies coursework requirements. Survey data from our first four months show that 99% of participants either strongly agree or agree or agree that they are satisfied with their professional learning experiences at monthly meetings. 94% strongly agree or agree that professional learning content is relevant to their current role. The following comment was recently shared by one of the program participants. "The program has allowed teachers to come clear their heads. I can focus on myself as a professional, and I have available resources and connect with other teachers and other professionals. I have found the content in ITech helpful. On a personal note, I would not still be teaching if it weren't for this program." The TLC program is currently available to provisionally licensed teachers at the secondary level and those seeking K-12 license endorsements in areas such as physical education and the arts. Henrico is currently in the application process to extend the TLC program to include provisionally licensed teachers at both the elementary and middle school levels. As highlighted in today's presentation, the commitment to recruiting, retaining, and rewarding HCPS staff continues to be a focus across the division. While the career ladder is not a standalone solution to the current teacher shortage, it is a proactive and innovative approach, unique to Henrico County Public Schools. The first 18 months since the career ladder's official launch in July 2022 have demonstrated staff buy-in and satisfaction, program credibility, enhanced instructional practices, and improved retention rates. However, this is just the beginning. We look forward to sharing further success and expansions updates at a future board meeting. The career ladder truly is making a difference. Please see the slide on the quote from a cohort member from the first specialization. "I believe that in life, it is so important to continue learning. I was considering switching counties and possibly careers because I felt my learning was stalled. I also felt it was so hard to climb a step on the pay scale and move up the ladder. However, after taking this class, I'm having so much fun challenging myself and learning again. Each week, I can't wait to go back to my schools and try out what I've learned. I am really enjoying teaching again, and I appreciate the career growth opportunities from HCPS." This sentiment is one we hear repeatedly from career ladder participants. For those who have considered leaving the profession or transferring to other counties, opportunities afforded through the Henrico career ladder re-energize their passion for teaching and their commitment to Henrico County Public Schools. At this time, I will return the presentation to Dr. Hughes.
As we conclude this afternoon's presentation, I want to thank you for your continued support of the meaningful, personalized professional learning and your commitment to funding the career ladder. We mentioned the planned expansion of learning opportunities, and as you know, that requires an investment through our operating budget. We look forward to coming before you in the future to outline our expansions to support bus drivers, instructional assistants, office professionals, and school leaders. Today, we wanted to focus on the teacher components and share the impact of the funding the career ladder has already had on teachers and by extension, their students. At this time, we will be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes.
It was speed career ladder.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes and Dr. Weston, for this presentation. I'll turn the floor over to my colleagues, starting to my right with Mrs. Cancela for any comments you would like to make or ask questions.
I think I'm just going to comment at this point since we've run long today. I appreciate you breaking this out of the budget because it has been a financial component of recent budgets, right? And the expansion. Like, I couldn't be more excited, listening, valuing, appreciating our employees. This career ladder is in direct response to what our employees have said they needed. And the expansion of it, I mean, bus drivers, thank you so much. That's in direct response to bus driver advocacy. I know I've shared with my colleagues and heard in recent months. And just for our instructional assistants, our office professionals, our school leaders, really just tremendous work in all the ways that we're valuing employees and doing things different in Henrico. Just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. I'll just piggyback on what Ms. Cancela said. In Henrico, we do things different. I think we do things better, and this is a really great example of it. This is an example of teachers having a voice in deciding their own growth and development and being able to climb the career ladder for advancement while still continuing to do what they love in the classroom. In Henrico, we know that not one-size-fits-all of our students,